Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the School Board of Elachua County, October 18th, 2022. Please stand and join for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, we have the adoption of the agenda. And one clarification I'd like to make before we have the motion is that for Action Item Three, the new administrative job descriptions first reading, we will be having those presented individually. So it'll be the same point in the agenda, but we'll do it one at a time. Okay, do I have a motion to accept the agenda as explained?
I'll move.
Motion by Dr. Muneeley, seconded by Ms. Sirdan. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five zero. I'm looking for an approval, a motion to approve the regular school board minutes from October 4th, 2022.
I'll move, Mr. Chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sirdan, seconded by Ms. Russell. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Next, we have Board members, superintendent announcements. We're going to start with Ms. Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It came to my attention that this, that October is National Principals' Month. I just wanted to say thank you to all of our school principals who do a wonderful job of administrating their schools and taking care of their students and employees. They're very important. We support our principals, and I wanted to say thank you to all the principals. And also, a big shout out to Wiles Elementary students. Eight of them were chosen for the Florida All-State Chorus, and several of them were actually repeat members of that. That's quite an honor. And then Stephen Foster Elementary School has, has won an award from the State Food Nutrition Association for their innovative idea with recycling food. And so I wanted to say congratulations to them as well for being so creative and so, such good stewards of their resources there, and not, not being wasteful, but, but creating a way to recycle. So we, we are very proud. Those are both elementary schools. So, you know, a big shout out to them. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Russell. And I'm not sure about the light. Is that you, Ms. Sirdan?
It is me, yes.
Okay.
I should have practiced that before we started.
No, that, that's okay, but I'm, the, the lights are just a little bit different.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I was going to mention the principals thing, but Ms. Russell's done that. But I'd like to just share with the board, the past two weeks, I appreciate you all rescheduling the workshop from our first Wednesday to the second Wednesday, which allowed me to attend the FSBA, the Florida School Board Association's Executive Committee and Board of Directors meeting in Crystal River. Our current president, Thomas Kennedy, hosted the organization in Crystal River. And that was where our executive committee, as well as the Board of Directors, which are elected by regions for the, for the state, we met. And part of that is training for new Board of Directors and the executive committee, as well as planning out the two upcoming, part of the upcoming conference, winter conference. But the big thing that we do, we did on this meeting was work on our strategic plan for the organization and kind of updating that where we are. We adopted the plan last year when I was treasurer. And when I was, as treasurer, I was chair of the Finance Committee. And one of the things that we did was explore our, we adopted, of course, you all know, a small increase in our dues, but we explored raising or trying to increase our non dues revenue. And so this year, we're kind of continuing along that pathway. But what is going to be critical for the organization's stability is with term limits and trying to manage through and train up new leaders so that we could have a continuity in case people seek not to be, seek reelection or they're term limited out. So it's really key for that. And then last week, myself, being president-elect, I sit on, as a board member on the Florida School Board Insurance Trust, and Dr. Paulson is our trustee for that. And as part of that meeting last week, just as a heads up, Mr. Relles probably heard this from Mr. Jamison, they had their winter meeting, which included risk managers, the trustees from each of the districts that have, are covered by insurance and FISB, as well as our, the Association Executive Director. And in this meeting, I'm bringing this up now, we know we were spared in Elachua County from any damage from Ian, but we did have three FISB districts that had damage, Okeechobee, Charlotte County, and Lee County. Each had significant, and DeSoto, so four counties. And what, what was really shared as part of us being part of FISB is the support that those districts received from FISB to try to mitigate the damage. But all of us, we've heard about the impending insurance crisis, homeowners insurance crisis that we're in as a state. Well, that is also going to affect our, the organization FISB, as it would be any other carrier that covers a school district. So there are some measures and strategies that are being taken to try to be able to make sure that we can buy insurance out in the market to be able to re-insure the districts. But there, that is probably going to come with an increased cost, especially after Ian. And we had the, the districts, the four districts that I just mentioned that had damage. It's not yet determined what the dollar amount is on that damage. But the organization itself is, is financially strong, good reserves and the, and the like. But it is something to know that we will likely, in the coming year, when renewal time comes, have an increase in costs. As well as, another thing they did is they trained their risk managers and go over different strategies to ensure that the districts are doing everything that they can to mitigate damages, as well as having proper coverage, coverage at the proper amounts. And so it was said that there was one school that had a building on their row that was $8 million. So a whole school only insured for $8 million, which is probably going to be a significant hit to FISB because it's going to cost more than $8 million to replace damage to that after the storm. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sirdan. And I think it's, it's, I think that's very, very good information for us to be aware of, of what's happening with storm damages. And, you know, there for the grace of God, that we would be there. And it's certainly something that we have to always be prepared and ready and, in case we had that same problem. Superintendent Andrew.
Thank you, Chairman Hyatt. I'd like to just share and announce that we've put together an ABC report, just a preview for our board members. And I'd like to begin by thanking our, our Office of Accountability, Evaluation, and Data Analytics. Mr. Gilfillan, our director in our Office of Accountability, Evaluation, and Data Analytics is here if we need to answer any specific questions. I would begin by saying, we plan on for the public to put on their calendars, Wednesday, November 2nd, we have a board workshop scheduled at 1:00 PM. And we'll do a, a deep dive into all things data and actions and things that we're doing here in Elachua County Public Schools. Also, we'll continue that discussion on Wednesday, December 7th, at 1:00 PM at that board workshop. And it's our intent to get together and present this data, some of the actions that we're taking, what's working, what's not working at our workshops. And we welcome the public and parents and anyone that would like to join us as we do this. So definitely mark your calendars for November 2nd and December 7th. Just to begin with, with a overview from a high level, we looked at attendance behavior and core academics. One thing to note, as far as attendance this school year, overall, we're up, we compared quarter to quarter. Our first quarter ended on Thursday, October 13th, last week. And so we, we compared this year's school data to last year, school year 2122. And we've increased overall from 89.7 in the first quarter last year to 92.5% this year. In grades K-5, we saw an increase of 3.7% from 88.4% to 92.1. In grade six to eight, we saw an increase there from 89.4% to 93.3%. And that's 3.9%. And then in high school, grades nine to 12, we saw a 91.3% increase to 93.1 this school year, which was 1.8%. As we drill down into the data, we're taking a close look at our SI schools and other schools across the district. We did have five schools jump out at us as far as attendance rates below 90% that we'll continue to focus on and lean into. Those schools were Twilliger at 89.6%, Twilliger Elementary School, Shell Elementary School at 88.8%, Sidney Lanier Center School at 85.8%, Hawthorne Middle High School at 85.5% and Aquan Jones Center School at 81.4%. So our quarter one attendance rate for SI schools at this current date, or as of last week, the end of the quarter, was 90.5% compared to 92.5% for non-SI schools. So to continue into the, the attendance piece just a little bit, we did share with our board members, our overall SI school focus and average total attendance. And we charted that. And we, we highlighted the grade levels in each specific SI school that were below 90%. And just for the record, right now, our focus SI schools are Lake Forest Elementary School, Metcalf Elementary School, Elachua Elementary School, Rawlings Elementary School, Idowild Elementary School, Twilliger Elementary School, and Shell Elementary School. And what we've seen is basically 9% of students at SI schools were absent on a daily basis in the first quarter. So that's one out of 11 students. Lake Forest, fifth grade was a high note. We noticed they, they had 95% of their children attending. What we need to focus on for sure that jumps out at us is our kindergarten and first grade students have the lowest attendance in our SI schools. So we'll be continuing to work on that. When it comes to actual actions that we've taken in working on attendance, we do have family liaisons, tracking tardies, setting goals with students and rewarding those who meet their goals. We have administrators calling families to check in when students have multiple absences to just check on well-being and, and what's happening with the particular student in the family, because oftentimes there's things that, that we're not aware of. And so checking in to see if we can offer them additional support in other ways. We schedule EPT meetings to discuss attendance with families. We identify Tier Three attendance students and work with those students and families to address those specific attendance concerns. We do conduct home visits. Of course, we mentioned that earlier, but we've targeted incentives for improving attendance. We do partner with our other schools to share ideas as we get together and collaborate. And then I do know with Attendance Works Resources, we share webinars and with leaders to counter truancy and attendance issues. And as we head into the workshop, we'll get into Attendance Works and what we're doing there. Really, Attendance Works is a tool we've identified to help us build public awareness, look at innovative practices that are proven to work and facilitate that peer learning among schools, as well as looking at policies, both at the local, state, and federal level that could help improve attendance. So the, the big thing about Attendance Works is we're looking at, as we all are, chronic absenteeism and how we can address that. We, we jumped from attendance in the report into some behavior offenses. And what we saw in behavior offenses in the first nine weeks of the school year compared to last year, the total number of discipline offenses were down. But digging into the grade levels, what we saw was the K-5, the K-5 grade group was down from 1,008 to 741 this quarter. The sixth through eighth were down from 2,590 offenses to 2,431. And the ninth through 12th grade were up from 1,609 offenses to 2,032. So we're, we're going to pull, as we dig into this in our next workshops, we're going to pull, you know, five-year trends, knowing that the pandemic occurred, but look at data before and after the pandemic, not so much during when we were doing digital learning and those things. So as far as, we also dug into our, our SI schools and looked at their data. And we noticed the most recorded offenses are for kindergarten through second grade, with most of those being unsafe acts, as we work with our little ones, trying to get them to observe our safe practices that we would like them to follow while in school. While we are looking at this, we're going to, of course, look at more offense descriptions. But what we saw in the, just a quick rundown for public consumption is, you know, as we mentioned, the top offenses, we would imagine in kindergarten through fifth grade were unsafe actions, followed by classroom disruptions and defiance. But it, it really was unsafe actions that were the offenses there. The sixth through eighth grade in our middle schools, we saw classroom disruptions. And some of this isn't new news. Dr. Edwards had shared quite a bit of this out throughout last year. But the classroom disruptions are, are the, the offense that has the most at 494, followed by unsafe actions and defiance in middle school. As far as high school, we've mentioned this before too, it's skipping or leaving campus that have the most offenses. And so, and tardies are right behind it, getting to school on time. And those are typical in, in the high school setting. You have some defiance, but you have fewer, class, a lot fewer classroom disruptions and acts of unsafe actions. So, and part of that's the maturity factor. So as far as that, we, we did a, just a slight dive into the, the discipline there. And we're going to break it out by school and continue to take aggregated data and disaggregate it to where it's presentable and mean, and meaningful to not only our board members, but our faculty, staff, administrators, and our, our parents. As, as far as behavior goes, you know, we've been working with our schools on school-wide expectations, using positive reinforcement, following the PBIS model, as most of you know. And there's class level, grade level, school-wide rewards. We're also providing professional development for teachers. And it's kind of like a PBIS basics or a PBIS refresher. We have PBIS faculty and staff committees for Tier One problem solving to try to address those challenges. Most of you know, we have school stores, positive behavior referrals. We've been working, as we kicked off this new school year, we had our mentor coaches kind of lean in and really help with classroom management strategies for our beginning teachers in our schools. So we asked them to do that. And we've certainly increased focus on instructional strategies that, and practices, if you will, to increase student engagement through professional development, planning, and coaching. Part of our, our focus there in, in behavior management is instruction that's certainly engaging and hooks our children, all of our children in. So we're also, we have a pilot through our Student Services Department with Insights to Behavior. And that's being piloted in, I think roughly 10 schools. And just so you know, we'll get more into that. But really, it's, it's a program that empowers administrators and teachers with just a suite of tools to help create, update, track, and report behavior intervention plans. Because we do BIPs, if you will, BIPs, Behavior Intervention Plans, as we're meeting as teams within our school setting. So there's, on that website, the Insights to Behavior, you know, one would find research-based strategies, behavior management best practices, just how to conduct our workflow efficiently. And, and again, it's just about continually improving and better equipping teachers with specific skills. So that's, that's where we're at right now. The assessment piece with Core Academics, you know, with the FAST implementation, we use Renaissance. And we've, we saw great participation. We did see, like with our kindergarten, only 86% of our students were tested there. And so that participation was lower, and we'll be looking into that. We did see 95, 98, 97% rates in the other areas assessed by FAST. So I think overall, there was strong participation in the first wave of K-2 FAST testing. If we, if we look at our third through 10th, there was a couple areas that drew our immediate attention. And particularly, it was our ninth and 10th grade levels where, in reading the percent tested, looking at participation was in ninth grade, 93.8, and in 10th grade, 90%. So in those areas, we're going to take a look at the why that, that occurred, or how we can improve that, and our messaging there and our, our contacting families as to the importance of that. So as a school district, overall, we had 95% or more of all third through eighth graders participate in the first FAST testing window of the school year. And overall, high school was above 90%, but we still, like I mentioned, want to look at our ninth and 10th grade areas. As far as FAST kindergarten through second, just at a quick look, we had, so with, with the FAST, we're using Renaissance, which includes our kindergartners and our first and second graders. And we use STAR early literacy with our K-1 students and STAR math with our K through 2 students. And you'll hear STAR reading. STAR reading is what's used for the second grade students. So those are the areas that, that were tested. And as far as percentage students at grade level, the 40th percentile and up, almost half of our students, 47% of our kindergartners were at grade level. In both the literacy assessment and the math assessment, it was right at 50, it was 50% for our first graders in the early literacy, where the math amongst the first graders was at 69%. And then as we looked at our second graders, their reading at or above grade level was at the 46th percentile. In STAR math, it was at 55%. So moving to our third through 10th participation, we covered that. We won't dig into the details there. But what we would share is when it comes to math assessment with our, our middle school students, as well as some of our high school students, there's a lot of different things going on depending on the math course that students are in. And so whether they're in accelerated courses, they may be in one grade and taking the math assessment at a grade level above them. So we'll get into those details too. But what we did do is we shared with our, our, our board, and we're going to present all of this in a, a meeting, like I said, on November 2nd. Elachua County Public Schools scored at or above the state average in the ELA score in seven of eight grade levels. Math, we've got some work to do there. We only scored at or above the state levels in three of six grade levels that we looked at there, that where we were at or above the state average. So what we're looking forward to is at the end of October, we're going to have some percentile ranks that will be released by the Florida Department of Education. And this will help give us a better understanding of where we are with students as we look at those percentile rankings. And we pretty much covered most of what is in the report. When it comes to academics, we are doing a number of things, but we've had collaborative planning sessions with administrator support and attendance. We have literacy implementation specialists assigned to each school. Our SI schools have priority. We do have district math coaches, as most of you know. Our SI schools, again, have priority to those coaches. We have a math, we have math curriculum specialists and district math coaches providing professional development, both online as well as in person in response to classroom instruction, trends, and feedback. Excuse me, math instructional strategies, Canvas course is in place, designed by the math specialist to aid in the implementation of our best standards with new curriculum resources. As you know, we've covered UFLY several times in different workshops. And the UFLY Foundation's intervention for grades three to five just completed their recent training. So we do, do look at tiered teacher support. We're using core curriculum materials to teach the grade level benchmarks in both reading and math. We do have standard focus boards to ensure instructional alignment to the grade level benchmarks. We have been using student data during data chats to plan for instruction and intervention. There's small group intervention during the school day based on DIBELS data that occurs at our schools. Many of you have heard, we do have after-school tutoring opportunities. Professional development is a key piece of all of this. And we work on that and collaborate for monthly principals meetings. We've scheduled that into our principals meetings. It's grounded in the goals addressed in school improvement plans. So again, planning has, for professional development based on individual school grades and school needs is, is certainly part of the process. And lastly, we've, we've done, as far as ABC actions in specific SI schools, as some of our leaders know, we do monthly instructional walks as checkpoints between scheduled state visits. So in between the state visits, we have school administration, SI principals, principal supervisor, and the deputy superintendent typically there if state team members are unavailable. And there are also action plans developed collaboratively by school-based administrators and our SI principals following the instructional reviews. So there are also action steps and monitoring for implementation that are followed through by our SI principals and checked. So that would probably wrap that up as far as some of the action that's being taken there. And I would also like to defer to Mr. Gilfillan to share some other insights. He helped put this together, this initial ABC report preview. And we've had some discussions too, as how we're going to continue to move forward with it and the deep data digs that we're going to, going to collaborate on. So Mr. Gilfillan?
I, I do need to interrupt just a second in that we have a time certain 6:30 public hearing. So I'll be interrupting in a minute. And so please continue for, for a little while.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Andrew. I think you summarized everything we had well, Mr. Andrew. I think the only thing that I would add is, as we go into the November School Board Workshop, when we start talking about things like attendance, the needs of every community are different. The circumstances of every school community are going to be different. So I think one of the benefits of having the community come is being able to bring some of those. some of those challenges and issues to it, right? I think one of the things I see is my role in helping Mr. Andrew and our team shape this, right, is helping us bring and find the hidden insights. If we're talking about our schools in Hawthorne, are we talking about the distance kids have to travel to get to school as part of our conversation around attendance, right? I think that's one of the things I am excited to see, I think, from our community leaders and families and teammates around our conversations with attendance. But like Mr. Andrew said, we're, we're looking forward to sharing that at the November 2nd Board Meeting and beyond.
That was pretty good.
Thank you, Mr. Guilfillan. And just one clarification, Chairman Hyatt, is that, so SI, we use so many acronyms, but that's School Improvement, right? And, and we have the Bureau of School Improvement here at our SI schools, frequently assisting us with working on, providing our students with all the opportunities they need so we can have better outcomes for all of our kids. So that's what we're referring to when you hear SI or BSI, is the Bureau of School Improvement and our school improvement schools, which I mentioned, we had seven of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Churney?
Thank you, Chairman Hyatt. Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Andrew. We are scheduled for a public hearing to consider and receive input on the proposed new and amended board policies that have been provided. We went to a first reading on this on September 20th. Since that first reading, only three of these policies have been updated, and the statement of purpose and individual policies are highlighted and have been provided to the board and put on the website that reflects those changes.
I don't have at this time any sheets, any information sheets saying someone wants to speak to this. Do we have anyone on the phone to answer us? No. So we're now, the public hearing is concluded. Now we're going back to board members, superintendent announcements. Dr. Paulson?
Ms. Surtin said the other night, when I didn't, wasn't talking into the microphone, she said, "It's like you're adding the board." I thought it was funny. But anyway, as she said, I've been on FISB's, I've been a trustee of FISB's for, I can't, I've been 12 years on the board, I don't know how back I go on. But it's a tremendous organization. Let me tell you some of the things. We had people going, when they went down, while we were there on Thursday, some of the guys were leaving because they were going to go down and help get food for people in DeSoto and Lee County and Charlotte County. So if you heard me at the last board meeting, I was just saying how people are, some of the, the best is coming out of people. FISB is a tremendously run organization. I hope we stayed with it for years. There's 12 counties in right now, and it serves the purpose, as you can see right now with some of these counties, because people couldn't afford it. I think it's tremendously run, and that they, that we discussed there, how we can even raise more money, even if we have trouble because it's, you know, we're going to, prices are going to go up. But again, we, this is a tremendously run organization. I think it helps sometimes. We had our lawyer talk a couple of years ago, didn't you, Mr. Delaney? And, you know, I was just, I was, they're tremendous people to work with. I was, you know, I hate to leave, leave that organization. And so it's, but I, I think it's something we need to, lucky we're in it, and I think we're probably going to have more people want to join the organization. So it's, this gives you an idea how, how we can be sure of things that won't have emergencies. So I just want to go over that. And, and the man that runs it is tremendous, tremendous people. I'm going to miss it. I wish I, I missed some meetings live, I had to go Zoom some, but then I had a family problem with, you know, I lost somebody very dear to me this year, and at the same time, I got ill afterwards, so. But I was glad to be there at this meeting. And, and Ms. Surtin was there, and I gave you my proxy to vote, didn't I?
Yes.
And so, because I had to leave Friday, and so I'm not quite ready to drive over by myself, so I just, you know, had to leave. And I, and she, I'm glad she was there and she could vote for us. But anyway, I'm glad we're in there, it gives us a chance. We also, besides myself and have Mr. Delaney in there, we're, our risk manager also participates in FISB. So this is a good chance to let people know what some of the things we do to make sure we're safe, and that we can have an emergency and then have some way to, to deal with that emergency. And so that's what I wanted to talk about. One thing, the math, can I just say one thing, Superintendent? You know, one thing to look at is, you know, we have so many kids taking higher level classes in the middle school. That could have some effect on our test scores, couldn't it? You know what I mean? I think that would be worth looking into, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Paulson. And just, Dr. Paulson didn't mention it this time, but he has a very close connection in DeSoto County, and his son-in-law is superintendent, that's correct. And we have a former teacher from Alachua County, Dr. Joshua White is the principal at DeSoto High School. So anyway, we certainly wish them well in, in, in getting back to, to normal down there. Okay. We're going to, now I have citizen input. This is a time for comments, input on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. I have two, only two speaker request forms, so if there's anybody else, if you would please send me, it's Johnson for a form. Each speaker will have three minutes. And our first speaker is Sarah Minich. And you can go to the, the microphone in the back.
My name is Sarah Minich. I am the mother of a second-grade child who has gone to Tewiliger Elementary School since kindergarten. When Tewiliger was moved, it was not easy to tell how things would change and what challenges would occur. The transportation issues and economic disparities of the children at the school that they face is in urgent need of not only rezoning, but a look at equally distributing the schools to ensure all students in our community have equal opportunities to an education. In the past year, I've witnessed children needing to be picked up from school due to the bus driver shortage. I've heard of children missing school caused from a lack of transportation, and I personally have had difficulties with my child being added to the bus roster. Pulled from the National Center for Education Statistics, 75% of the students at Tewiliger are underprivileged when compared to our neighboring schools in our community closer to where Tewiliger students are zoned, which lie an average around 30% of underprivileged students. Tewiliger overwhelmingly supports our underprivileged community, and sending these children out of public transportation areas creates an additional disadvantage to the children and their families. Some may not be able to find a way to go to meet the teacher or other school events throughout the year, let alone drop them off or pick them up during the school year. I love Tewiliger and its amazing teachers and staff. Not only does my child go there, but it's my alma mater as well. Per Alachua County Public School Policy 5120, the board finds district school zones and the assignment of students to schools should be consistent with the best interests of the students and the economical and practical use of district resources. And as you can see, based on this policy and what I've stated, I feel there is an urgent rezoning to ensure that all of our students continue to be taken care of. And that's it?
Okay. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Leslie Peebles.
I'm Leslie Peebles, and I'm a former art teacher in Alachua County, and I'm also the grandmother of the child at Tewiliger. So when my children were young, there was a great push towards neighborhood schools, and I came to realize that this was code for resegregation. The first school I taught was Prairie View Elementary, but we lost half of our students to charter schools, and vouchers took the rest of the diversity away from that school, and it closed. And it was just a wonderful school. Duval Fine Arts Academy was my second school. I loved the kids, incredible curriculum. We had such a dynamic and amazing school, but we weren't able to attract the diversity that we were hoping to, and we lost even more diversity due to some rezoning decisions. So we were overwhelmingly disadvantaged population. Tewiliger has met the same fate over the years. When my children went to Tewiliger, it was a fabulous school, full of kids from all walks of life. The poorest and most disadvantaged school populations don't test as well as wealthy ones, and they are blamed. And is this why no nearby neighborhoods were zoned for a gorgeous new school full of fabulous teachers? And I want to ask, when did school grades become more important than people, than children, and more important than our society? I just believe pretty passionately that, that diversity is strength, and I'm really grateful that my children got a more diverse school experience than many children are getting in Alachua County today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any calls? No calls at this time? So Superintendent Andrew, if you can, it's time to present the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Hyatt. Superintendent recommends that the school board approve the consent agenda as described in items two through nine.
Do I have a motion to that effect?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Russell, seconded by Dr. McNeely. Any discussion?
Question on part, Title I, Part D. Is Miss, someone can answer that, or I don't see her here, but...
No, I don't see her there, but I can try to do that for you.
This is a renewal of this particular grant, correct, Ms. Wise?
Yes, ma'am.
I saw one spot in there, I think it may have just been a typo. So what we're doing with this grant is, is for all of our alternative education situations, that's what it's, it's funded. It seems like the Detention Center School, it mentions Sequel Corporation, which we don't deal with them anymore, if I'm correct, if I remember correctly, and Pace Center and Aquan, I think are the three educational facilities that are being mentioned in here.
I'm sorry, did you say Sequel was mentioned?
Yes.
Sequel provides the, the residential service for the Alachua Academy. So we're the educational provider for that center, but they provide the residential service.
Okay. All right. And that is, this, this is a renewal, correct? It's not like something new, it's something that we've done in the past?
Yes, ma'am.
And then my other question, if it's renewed, was it due July 1st, like with the new, start of the new year, because we're just getting it now?
I'd have to check on that for you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Chief Pelton?
Chairman, we're moving to action item number one, and Chief Pelton will go ahead and make the recommendation on behalf of the superintendent.
I recommend to move for the approval.
We'll have a motion to approve part of Safe Schools Assessment Tool. As we all learned this afternoon, we had a very good presentation. Do I have a motion to that effect?
No move.
Motion by Dr. McNeely, seconded by Dr. Paulson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, chief. Next, Ms. Nguyen.
Good evening, Chairman Hyatt, board members, and Superintendent Andrew. This action item is for the bid award for project, SBAC Project A 1904, the Westwood Middle School redesign and redevelopment. The superintendent recommends that the board accept the low base bid of $31,937,007 and award the contract for construction to DE Scorpio Corporation, doing business as Scorpio, Gainesville, Florida. Completion of this project shall be within 543 consecutive calendar days, plus an additional 84 consecutive calendar days to complete the bus loop and the bus loop canopy from the date indicated in the notice to proceed.
Do I have a motion for that?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Paulson, seconded by Ms. Surtin. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Dr. McNeely?
Mrs. Nguyen, even though you spelled it out 543, I don't, I can't do my math as quickly, so would you give us an approximate date for that?
We are targeting opening this school in August of 2024.
2024. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And I would say, also recognize, the Westwood Principal, Mr. Bernie, is here, so welcome. And I know this is important to him, as it is for the entire Westwood community. Any, any further comments about it? Ms. Surtin?
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen, thank you for the info last week with the change in costs. I have one question that I do want to ask, because I had been speaking with, with staff after Bishop and all of those, and I wanted to ask, will there be a commissioning by an outside firm on this project?
Yes.
According to our standards? So you, we've already, that's factored into this so that we avoid any of the issues and, and catch problems before the end of the project, when it's virtually impossible to get things done because people have been paid?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Paulson, did you have a?
No.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay.
Sorry, one other question. And it will start at the start of the project, correct? The commissioning will start, it'll be along, where we'll have someone that's doing the commissioning that's hired by or on our staff, school board staff, not by the engineer and the other, the contractors.
You want to speak to that? Chad? Well, I, yeah, but I don't know about the beginning piece. I mean, this is something that Mr. Nix has talked about, but, yeah. Do you want to speak to that, Chad?
My name is Chad Jones. I'm with Harvard Jolly Architects. We're the designer of the new school. And on the commissioning aspect of it... And on the commissioning aspect of it, the district will be looking at a third-party firm for that, but in order to get going in that process, then the project has to be approved. So they will be working alongside our team, but not contracted through our team for the commissioning of that, for that purpose.
Okay, thank you.
We don't, I don't know if you were asking about having a commissioning agent also through the design, perhaps?
Um, no, from the start of the project. Be it from, I don't think the design, but from the start, when the project starts, to make sure that we are, our interest, the district's interests are being looked upon. And it's, and I'm assured that Mr., I can't think of your name, I've forgotten it just that quickly, but he said that it would be...
Chad Jones.
Mr. Jones, it said you'll have a third-party company that will work alongside, but not be in supervisor, reporting to you all, but would be standing and having a fiduciary or some type of duty towards the district, is what I'm asking. Thank you.
Okay, do I have any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Ms. Surtin?
Thank you, Chairman Hyatt. Action item number three is A through D, is new administrative job descriptions. This is the first reading. The proposed new job descriptions are set forth in the documents that have been provided, and each job description sets forth the minimum qualifications, knowledge, skills and abilities, job goal, performance responsibilities, and physical requirements for each of the positions. Each provided document contains a statement of purpose and effect, which outlines the reasons for the proposed new job descriptions, and whether there are any financial implications for the job descriptions. As to action item, we'll first go to 3A. The superintendent recommends that the board approve that action item, the new proposed administrative job description of principal turnaround.
Do I have a motion to accept?
So move.
Motion by Ms. Surtin, seconded by Ms. Russell. Any discussion?
I actually do have a question. In, in reading the job description, and my question is, they've been, I know they've been working in this, and I've had some discussion with Mr. Andrew and Ms. Jones about it, but I guess my question is, is these two individuals that are, this position and the work that they have to do, how, I don't see anywhere in here where the recommendations and things that they think need to happen, where that has to be adopted by the principal or the teaching staff. Like, I'm trying to figure out their level of authority. Can anybody tell me how that's gonna, because that's, that's key. That's a key, key in my eye. You've got someone who is going in, and we're saying they're doing this work to support these people, and they can make a recommendation, but if the principal or the teacher on that particular, at that school doesn't want to adopt that, how, how, how will that be handled? I didn't see that in here.
Superintendent Andrew, did you want to address that?
Yes, sir, that's a great question. So these two, as you know, would report to the deputy superintendent, and so if they did not want to adopt that, it'd be reported to the deputy superintendent, who would follow up with specific principals. And so it would be through her, and through her position, that they would be directed that this is what we need to do.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Do I have any other discussion on 3A? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Chairman Hyatt, if I may, just excuse me for one second. I didn't share that, the, pardon the interruption, but to share with Vice Chair, Ms. Surtin. They do meet those principals with the deputy superintendent weekly, so there's continuous communication there. And they're also working closely with the executive director of elementary schools. And so the four of them meet weekly and discuss all of the SI schools. And if there's any action that's needed to be taken after that meeting, then Ms. Jones reached out, you know, she reaches out to the specific principals.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Surtin?
As to action item 3B, the superintendent recommends that the board approve action item 3B, the new proposed administrative job description of director, exceptional student education services for advertising, and schedule a public hearing on November 15th at 6:30. And actually, I apologize, the previous recommendation included that as well. The recommendation is for advertising and scheduling this for a public hearing.
Okay. All, excuse me, do I have a motion for that?
We already have.
Have we already done this?
We, this is the first reading.
Okay, so, so is this, so we, we still need to have a vote on this?
Yes, so the vote, and I apologize, and I don't know if we, we'll check with Mr. Lay, maybe he's already due that last vote. The vote is not to approve the job description, the, the vote is to approve this for advertising and schedule it for a public hearing.
Right. Yeah, so, no, I understood that as, so this is step one of, of, here, of the, so with that understood, I need a motion to accept item 3B for advertising.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, motion by Ms. Russell, seconded by Dr. Paulson. Any discussion?
I, I have a question. So this was, this, these next two descriptions came forth earlier, and they didn't get approved. So tell me, tell me about these now, why they're coming back now. Because, because this board here, the majority, I voted for them the first time, but this board did not approve them previously. So I'm trying to figure out, like, now, is there, are you bringing back something to us, to the members as to, to these two positions here?
It's Superintendent Andrew.
So yes, these have been brought back. They have been edited and shared with our current chief of equity inclusion. And as you know, student services and ESE both fall into that area. So we looked at them, we tweaked them a little bit, and we are bringing them back, because our thought is, as we're moving forward in the 2023-24 school year, we currently have an executive director of ESE and student services. And we think we'll, we can better serve our students with the director of ESE, and someone just strictly focused on the work of serving our students with disabilities. And then, on the other hand, we also feel that the next position coming up, as you mentioned, Vice Chair Surtin, is that that description for director of student support services is also needed to focus on all things student services when it comes to mental health and just their well-being, as well as everything that falls into student services, like our guidance and all of the counseling, the discipline and everything else, so.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Surtin, does that answer your question?
Much, yes.
Okay, thank you. And I will underscore for the public that these are, this is a position that would start the next fiscal year. Start, I would assume, I would assume July 1, but somewhere before, by the next school year.
Chairman Hyatt?
Yes, ma'am.
So what Attorney is doing tonight is just the first reading. We will go through the processes again.
Exactly.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Surtin, item 3D, please.
No, we haven't voted, we need to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Ms. Surtin. This is, this is 3B, 3, we have not done B yet?
No.
Okay, all in, all in favor of 3B, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Okay, 3C, please?
D.
Oh, okay, we were...
I'm sorry, C.
Okay, 3, Ms., this is why it's complicated when we split them, but you know, the right thing to do is to split them, that was a very good suggestion by Ms. Surtin. Go ahead, if you would, Ms. Surtin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Action item number 3C, the superintendent recommends that the board approve this item, which is the new proposed administrative job description of director, student support services for advertising, and schedule a public hearing on November 15th at 6:30. The only caveat I'll put in there is staff has reviewed this again, and there are maybe a few more duty changes, kind of shifts, just to make sure that each of these two positions will cover everything that needs to, but the one change under the qualifications is to add that the master's degree from an approved accredited educational institution currently listed in social work, school counseling, health, education, or related field specifically adds school psychology as well. And even though that would be covered under a related field, the staff would like that specified. So we'll be updating that prior to the public hearing and presenting that then.
Right, and until we have the final vote, it can be shifted, can be changed, as far as, is that correct?
Yes and no. So the public hearing is the last chance for input into any of these, and if it's mentioned or brought up before or at the public hearing, then more changes can be made. If nothing is mentioned at or prior to the public hearing, then they would go as is to the second reading.
Okay, I love those yes and no answers, they're great. Okay, do I have any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes...
A question.
Oh, I didn't see a question.
I can't hear the motion.
Okay. Do we have a motion for C?
I don't think so, no. So I move for, move with staff recommendation.
Okay. Motion, motion by Ms. Surtin, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. McNeely. I hesitate to say this, but any further discussion? Okay. Jeez, I'm sorry. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item 3D, please, Ms. Surtin.
The superintendent recommends that the board approve action item 3D, which is the new proposed administrative job description for director, executive, food and nutrition services for advertising, and schedule a public hearing on November 15th, 2022, at 6:30.
Okay, do I have a motion to that effect? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Paulson, seconded by Ms. Russell. Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Surtin?
Thank you. So I've spoken with Superintendent Andrew about this, but I do just want to say that I looked through the existing job description, as well as this new one, and they're virtually the same, just a few different words. I asked, when this was coming forth, if there was an expansion of duties, if there were additional duties, and I didn't get that. To serve more meals, to serve more people, that's part of, you know, kind of like what our school staff, the teachers and counselors and, you know, school counselors now are doing way more than just counseling, and we didn't change their, their job classification and give them more money. So I think we have to be very cautious in a time of declining enrollment, declining dollar amounts, of us changing and reclassifying one position, because I think it's going to put us in a situation where we have the salary compression we're going to have now. We have the other director, department director, which is transportation, that, that may be looked at as that we need to change that. And I just think we have to be very, very careful, and the concern that, that has been voiced by several of us on this board and other times with bringing forth new administrative positions and things of that nature, I think needs to be given to this same one. So right now, I don't think this is a good time to do that. I ask if it was any salary comparison with neighboring districts, I haven't gotten that information. And so I don't think the timing, because there is no change in duties, that this warrants a reclassification to a change in title and thus pay at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Paulson.
Okay, which, which gets approved? We'll discuss it.
We're voting for it to go forward, yes.
But the mic.
We're voting to, to go forward with this, and it would still go to a public hearing prior to final approval.
I asked, yeah. Maybe I didn't say it very clear. All right, either way, okay.
I didn't understand what your question was, Dr. Paulson.
I said, this, we vote to go forward to a public hearing, right?
Yes.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye. Tina?
Motion passes four to one, with Ms. Surtin voting no, and the balance of the board voting yes. Motion passes four to one. Okay, we are back to the part of, of our meeting for citizen input. I have not received any further requests, nothing, I, I indicate, nothing is on the phone, so now we're going to board member superintendent request. Dr. Paulson? Okay, Ms. Surtin?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gilfillan, for pulling together this data, Superintendent Andrew for presenting it. My request at this point, I've, the, I'm glad that I got some data, but it's not much more than what I had received from Ms. Jones and from attending the CAP meetings. So I guess in the November meeting, what I would, would like, the workshop that we would have, is that we really, really, we don't drown us in data. We, we know numbers and we know things are not well. We have seven SI schools, and I, I'd like to know what our goals are. We have a specific goal around attendance, around behavior, and the specific tactics, and who's responsible, and how we're measuring it, and when, if we're going to let data drive our, drive our decisions, and that we are really reacting to and governing ourselves according to that. I like that. Like today, what we got today, I thank you for fulfilling, a partial fulfillment of the request, but I think some urgency needs to be met. I don't think the board has received information that is known about the SI schools and what's being done, and if it's being successful. We're, the, the board has voted to, in their positions that are being filled, that are filled with people, that are tasked with doing this work, and those are investments that we're making in the educational careers of our students, and we need to really, really monitor and make sure that we're moving in the right direction and not waiting until the end of the school year or post-testing to say, oh, we didn't get, we didn't, we missed the mark with those schools. And, and I think really disaggregating the data and looking down in a more granular form to make sure that we are addressing the needs and the issues, the, the challenges, the areas that we're not really meeting the mark, is really crucial to moving forward and really waiting, and kind of stalling and delaying is not a good tactic. It's not, that's, that's not, that's not good for the students, it's not going to be good for the district. And, you know, we have those two schools that we've done, had the CAP meetings, meaning they have two grades below D or, D or F, with no two Fs, but two Ds, where if we don't pull those schools out of turnaround, those schools could be closed. And so that's really critical to me, and that's Lake Forest and Idlewild. And so I'm concerned, because we have some that have dropped back into turnaround status, you know, our number seven now. So I think we got to get beyond just throwing out a lot of data and thinking that's sufficient, and that it sounds good, and that it looks like we're monitoring, and we are really adjusting our practice, but we really need to. If, I, we say we have the mentor coaches at the schools, and they're doing that, how, how are we judging that, or looking at that to see if that's successful? If they are really meeting the needs of our teachers and the students? are really meeting the needs of our teachers and the students? And if, what they're doing, if that's being successful? I've asked that about one particular staff person at Idlewild, and I was like, how do, how do we know if this is being effective? Can you tell me how many students are participating in after-school tutoring? Are we reaching those students at the schools at Lake Forest that I mentioned, those two students who had not had a certified teacher for a couple years? Are we reaching those students at the SI schools? Are those the ones that are, participated in the extra tutoring that's out after school beyond the bell? How are we doing that? So are we going to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars at the end of the year and just say we, we had X number of contacts and, and think that's okay? I, I think, I think we have to look at it and be a little bit more analytical and, and do more, so that's my request. I've, I've shared that with, with Mr. Andrew a little bit earlier today, when he told me this was going to be here, but I felt that I needed to have that in the minutes again. Thank you.
Dr. McNeely.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've asked for this several meetings ago, I've spoken to the superintendent about it, and I think the team of folk, starting with Dr. Edwards, with the discipline plan, I have several pages here that I had been given at my last meeting with the superintendent. I have another one coming up on Thursday, and I'm hoping that the team has completed their efforts now, and he will be able to share with me at that point in time on Thursday. At what time?
Two.
At 2:00. And so I'm hoping, because school took in, as I told Dr. Edwards, August the 10th, and we are almost November the 10th, and I'd like to see what the team has come up, what's the resolution, how are we going to get this out to our administrators, our teachers, our parents, the students, everyone. So I'm looking forward to seeing that information, other than the two sheets that I received some weeks ago. Also, I'd like to, not taking over the chair's position, but I see that our school board representative is sitting on the dais now with us, and I hope that she has enjoyed this tonight, and maybe the chair will ask her to have some words.
Thank you, Dr. McNeely. Did you have any requests or any comments for tonight? Okay, okay, thank you. Well, I see no other lines, so I'm going to close it out. And I, I wanted to point out that the end of the first nine weeks was Thursday. This data that we got today, that's a pretty quick turnaround. And I, I think we, I'm, I'm just going to speak for me, and I'm going to make a request that we appreciate and support the folks that work in this building that are trying to get us the right information to make the right decisions. You know, I, I'm, I think, you know, one of the first things I learned on my, eight years ago, when I got on the board, or 20 years ago, if you believe Facebook, is that how we have a room full of folks, excuse me, a building full of folks here that do our, that, that come to work every day to do what's best for kids and to do what's best for kids that need the most help. And nobody's perfect, but I would just request that those people know how much we appreciate them. And I know that when we get to this workshop and, and this data is not just there to have data, but if we know, we'll have a way to know, a way to move forward. So anyway, so that's my request, and we are adjourned.